Alright.
Is everyone ready?
So we're gonna go ahead and open the meeting for August nineteenth, twenty twenty-one at six thirty-four. And rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Alright. So. First order of business is a full call of commissioner. It's Angelina.
Mr. Park.
He's muted.
Uh, I'm here.
Okay. Commissioner Melcher.
Here.
Mr. Wolf is.
Here.
Commissioner Parker.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Say here.
Greg.
Here.
Okay, there we go. Alright. So. Time in the. Meeting for public comment, but we have no one in the room. And I assume no one online.
Just our two Gregs.
Alright, well, they they counted something. So we'll move on to the next segment and meeting minutes from the last meeting, which I was not a part of. So anybody have any changes or amendments to the minute meetings?
They were pretty brief.
Looks that way. Saving paper.
I moved that we approved them.
You're like, what did I forget to print? So anybody want to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I moved to approve the minutes.
Right.
August fifth, two thousand twenty-one.
Alright, we have a motion from Henry and Commissioner Stevens, I believe, was the second. So we'll go to Angela for a vote.
Mr. Curry.
Yes.
Mr. Mama.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
I will abstain as I was not there.
Yes.
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 Alright. Moving right along. We'll go to. Reviewing code and staff update. As there's nothing on our agenda, which is fantastic.
Yeah, it's wonderful.
Yeah. It's like Christmas.
It's Christmas, holding out the ring.
Yeah.
Before we get started reading through the code. Just to. We have a number of things that staff is going to look at and examine that we've already talked about that we've had your feedback on, and I don't have anything to report on any of that, just that we've been pretty slammed with other ops, other projects and haven't managed to do much of that, but I promise you by the time we finish getting through all this, we will have material to go back and discuss.
Okay.
That you've asked about and how we can address it then, so. Um, other than that, we, if you wanted to report of what's going on first and then the reading, or do you care?
Yeah, how did the site visit go?
Hasn't happened yet.
Oh, this next Thursday?
Which one?
A site visit?
Oh, yeah. There is a big industrial user or a big industrial development developer that. We are in the finalist stage. We. They're looking at a number of properties. And it's a large, rather, it's a very large manufacturing operation. It would be, I believe they're looking for forty to sixty acres. And it's a paper products manufacturer, but they do not produce the pulp.
Okay.
The pulp would be brought into nowhere, so we don't have this, there's not the stinky aspect of it. It's just the manufacturing, they would haul in by rail all the pulp and then manufacture it into some paper product. I don't know exactly what paper product it is. I have suspicions. And I don't know what company it is yet, but even when I do know, I'm not gonna be a lot telling, so.
Right.
But they're coming on Tuesday. They would be, if they chose us, it would be a five hundred million dollar investment and probably two hundred jobs with the possible hundred and twenty after they're added to that later. So it'd be, it would be gargantuan for us. And frankly, when it with our infrastructure, it would be a major stretch, but it could be really, really good, so.
An infrastructure stretch based on water requirements and.
There, they would, they have really high requirements for, they'd be using a lot of water, producing a lot of wastewater, and they would be using a lot of power and a lot of natural gas. And so all of those, all of those utility infrastructure systems would need some pretty significant upgrades. The thing we have going for us is that we've got. A lot of raw water that we have a right to, that is well positioned to be used as processed water that's not potable yet. And so we can rather cheaply get that water to people. Rather than putting it through our plant. Which would obviously make them more expensive. So it's, that's our big, I think, our big strength that we're trying to play off of. We'll see how it goes. We're kind of scrambling, trying to get everything together and be ready to make us look as good as possible.
So is there any information that can be shared as of this point? I mean, that you might know that would. I mean, are they looking inside city limits, outside?
There are two sites that they're looking at. The, the one being the county mail property.
Right.
And the other being the big three hundred acre parcel that, that was the San Am River development. They were gonna do, so. One of those two sites.
Yeah, because one of them is still in deliberation with the county, I believe.
Right, the county is still looking at all the proposals there, and my understanding is they are still open to this particular. Industry.
You know.
It's exciting. I, it's, I still, it's kind of a long shot, but because we have a lot of really stiff competition. But I think we have some good strengths. Well, we'll see.
Do we know what the competition is?
Yeah, I only know what they're looking at in Oregon, and in Oregon, they're looking at Millersburg and here. One site in Millersburg and two sites here.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, uh, yeah, it's tough because proximity to I five is, is hard to compete with.
And the rail line that exists on the property in Millersburg.
But on the other hand, we have really good rail access too. And.
Yeah.
So it could, I think rail is one of the, the railroad's been very, very accommodating with this. They're very interested in it, so I think that's one of our strengths as well, but it's hard to compete with Millersburg.
Yeah.
They, they have some good tower infrastructure, they have some really good water infrastructure and.
Because there was a miller there at that, at one point.
And have really good natural gas infrastructure, so.
Are we in an enterprise zone here, like Millersburg?
Yeah, we have our own enterprise zone.
Okay.
So, but I also know that they're gonna be looking at sites in Idaho and probably in Washington as well. So that's hard to compete with too.
So is there any, any list as far as are we top five, top ten?
All I know is they're looking at us.
No, that's something.
And then, and originally, when we first put in information on this, they were looking at just the eastern parcel that San Am River Development. And then they came back and wanted to look at both. So. They're interested enough to tell us, show us both, which is something.
Yeah.
So is this a surprise thing that they talked about in the newspaper?
Yeah, we were, we're trying to get people on board with making spruce and uptown and making it look good.
Yeah.
So hopefully that gets the message, but again, it's surprising that we don't know who it is. And even once we find out, by the time I find out, I'll have signed a non-disclosure agreement.
Right.
I can't tell anybody anyway.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, we, we need to be, it's a good thing that I don't know anything yet because the, the pressure to say something would be frustrating.
Yeah.
And, and it can get you into trouble too, like if you make stuff out like that too early, it can stink your chance.
Take you off the list, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, that's the situation there. It's busy but exciting. I'll be doing a lot of talking next Tuesday.
So is there a timeline as far as when, I mean, obviously, we don't even know who it is, but when we find out if, if we're moving forward in the selection process or we've been eliminated?
They'll probably tell, they haven't updated me with one lately, but their last timeline had him visiting here in June, so obviously those are kind of taken with a grain.
Oh, right.
So I, I, I think sometime by the end of the year, we'll know, but. Probably much sooner than that. And we'll see.
Are we taking him out to lunch at the point?
Uh, we are not.
Taco Bell.
Pretty.
Taco Bell.
They have a pretty, a pretty. Pretty busy visit. There's a, probably a three hour meeting plus an hour tour. Unfortunately, it won't be.
Is it a three hour tour or?
That could be dangerous.
One hour, two or three hour meeting. But actually, it's to the, it's, they had to delay their visit a little bit in the day. They were originally coming in earlier and then they had to push it back and, and we're actually moving the council, the city council meeting to Wednesday instead of Tuesday to accommodate them. And there's a light agenda that day anyway, so makes it easier. So anyway, that's what's going on here. It's exciting. Um, and then there may be an opportunity with the state to apply for a grant for updating our comprehensive plan.
Oh, yeah.
So I'm hoping to.
Is there a deadline associated with that or?
Yes. I have to get something in, I think, a letter of interest by the end of the month.
And that would be really handy to do this and that at the same time.
Yeah.
A rare opportunity.
Especially if the state funds it.
Exactly.
I'll take it. Anything on your end?
Um, so actually, my application's coming up this meeting, so I wanted to do the, um, kind of a subdivision and flow to. Interesting things.
Yeah.
But.
This is a live walk, right?
A little bit smaller than what's proposed, but it's something that we've been looking to get it done.
Yeah.
We could already done the property line again. See that here.
Nice to have two sub streets connect to each other.
Finally start putting missing pieces of the puzzle together. Yeah.
If, if you have nothing better to do. October second is harvest festival, and we are looking for volunteers for many different areas, so you can sign up online.
Alright, so in other words, I need to be busy October second.
Busy St. Clark.
Right now, we typically get between about forty and fifty vendors in the first few weeks. I've had seventy-five and I'm now up to eighty-five vendors.
Wow.
Going out next week to go measure to make sure I think that everybody.
That's fantastic.
So, yeah, so there'll be a chili feed, cornhole tournament, high bake up, two bands, kids zone, all the vendors, maybe key vendors.
So are you gonna get to the point where you're gonna have to spill backwards across the bridge to the school property and use the field?
Possibly, this year we're not going to do it, but we actually had a conversation about.
Yeah, that'd be neat.
We talked about moving the cornhole folks over there. But you can't have a, can't have an alcohol permit.
No. No, you'd have to.
The people who run.
Like Jamboree.
That's like a field breaker for them.
Well, there's spots over there, I mean, wherever Jamboree had some.
But there's, but there's other, you know, different things that we can put over there. We've got a.
Yeah.
It's spread out, so I'll probably after this year, see how this year goes and then have some conversations with the school about utilizing at least from that baseball field over.
Mm-hmm.
Should see. I was told that we needed to do bigger and better and.
Well, that'll be interesting too, because that would alleviate a lot of parking because you could be able to come from the school property through.
School's already allowing me to use some parking over there, so vendors, we have a map for them, and they can park at the school and cross the field, so.
Oh, nice.
Given me permission for two areas of parking. There's a cheer clinic that day, so we can't take out some parking.
I think we've always had some folks park over there and walk across it.
Yeah, well, except for last, but they had the.
That's right.
But this is, you know, strategic directing people that way, so that they know, I mean, typically you have a lot more. I have a lot more helpers. Except fifteen, somebody should step up and maybe just take a good section. So.
For better first.
Only time of year I get the boss come around.
Nice, take what you can get.
Wait, wait, the only time of year, this takes like six months to prepare it for us, so.
Um, but, you know, which has been really great because there's a lot more ideas, there's a lot more to pull on. So I think. Kind of wants to move this year, especially when it comes to the vendors, they have a lot of vendors and they're having, now it's probably the biggest focus of all. Out there. We'll see. Two people in charge of that, but it's. I think they've got a hint.
I can't wait, I'm excited for it.
If you can volunteer, please come check it out.
Absolutely.
It'll be massive. Alright, that's it for that. Want to get this reading on the road?
Yeah, no more fun stuff to talk about.
We started at seventeen point three zero, right? Is where we stopped?
Yeah.
So that's the flood hazard overlay zone, which. Recommend if I'm wrong, we, didn't we like totally adopt this last year?
Windows has to be put.
So, yeah, so there's no, there's no changes to that, it's, it's what you approved last year.
Mm-hmm.
And this is not changing really anything of it. And so I would suggest that we not read these pages.
Sure.
Unless you feel the need to go over them.
Well, there was also a lot of obligatory language from the feds there that we can't change anyway, so.
Right.
As far, yeah, the abbreviation.
So with your permission, we will skip everything that's in tab sixteen, move on to tab seventeen.
Okay.
Which will bring us to seventeen point three two. Satisfactory?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Seventeen point three two, historical property overlay zone, HPO. Yes.
So this is something that we would.
Yeah.
Look at adopting through the downtown area more than.
Do we have any inventory from the historical register?
We, to my knowledge, we do not, do we? So, yeah, this is new. Seventeen point three two point zero one zero, purpose. The purpose of this overlay zone is to, A, promote the historic, educational, architectural, cultural, economic, and general welfare of the public through the preservation, restoration, and protection of those building structures, sites, zones, and objects of historic interest within the city. B, foster civic pride in the accomplishments of the past, and C, carry out the provisions of the Land Conservation and Development Commission Goal Five. Seventeen point three two point zero two zero, conformance required. No land shall be used and no building, site, object, zone, or structure of significance or part thereof shall be demolished, moved, or altered, nor shall any new construction take place within a zone or on a landmark site, except in conformity with this development code. Seventeen point three two point zero three zero, definitions. The following definitions shall apply to this section otherwise, don't know why it says otherwise. Alteration, a change, addition, or modification to the exterior of a building. Culture, cultural resource inventory, historical buildings or sites identified as significant on the Goal Five Historical Resource Inventory. Demolish, to raise, destroy, dismantle, deface, or in any other manner cause partial or total destruction of a landmark or any building within it, within an historic zone. Historic zone, a geographically definable area, the boundaries of which have been adopted by the city council pursuant to the provisions in chapter seventeen point three two. And to my knowledge, we don't have any such zone determined, so this is, this is a new section and there's not a map associated with it yet. And so that would be determined through this process. Would that be included in the comprehensive plan if that were to be placed? So if this is adopted. Any map that is adopted with it would, it would basically would add this, this overlay zone onto the zone, the zoning map. It, I don't know that any comprehensive plan change would be necessary for this section because it's, it doesn't really contradict anything within the comprehensive plan. We'd have to look into that and see. Landmark, any site, object, building, or structure designated by the city council pursuant to provisions in chapter seventeen point three two. Major public improvement, the expenditure of public funds or the grant of permission by a public body to undertake change in the physical character of property within a zone or on a landmark site, except for the repair or maintenance of existing public improvements. Seventeen point three two point zero four zero, landmark and zone designation. A, process, the process for designating a landmark or historic zone may be initiated, initiated by the council or the commission, probably should say planning commission, unless that's in the definition. Um, perhaps. We'll check on that, we just want to make sure it's consistent throughout. Or by any interested person who submits an application for designation to the city manager or designee. At the time of application, the city shall provide the property owner and applicant with information regarding the benefits and restriction of designation. B, information, the following information shall be required in an application. One, the applicant's name and address, two, the owner's name and address, if different from the applicant, three, a written description of the boundaries of the proposed zone or the relocation of the proposed landmark, four, a map illustrating the boundaries of the proposed zone or the location of the proposed landmark, five, a statement explaining the following, the reason, A, the reasons why the proposed zone or landmark should be designated, B, the reasons why the boundaries of the proposed zone are appropriate for designation, C, the potential impact, if any, with which designation of the proposed zone or landmark would have on the residents or other property owners in the area, six, any other information deemed necessary by the city. C, council action. Within city, seven days of receipt of a complete application, the city manager or designee shall forward the request to the council. Council shall hold a public meeting within forty-five days of receipt of the application pursuant to chapter one five two point four one nine of this development code. I don't, I'd be surprised if we go up to one five two, so. That seems like a typo.
Real quick, while, while you're stopping, back on the information thing and B, should there be something as simple as. Property address, other than just written description of boundaries of the proposed zone?
Um.
Or is that just?
It says the boundaries of the pro zone or the location of the proposed landmark, so that could be, if it's something that's, that's basically just an address, you know, if it's the, the home located.
That would count.
Such, that would count, but sometimes these things are a little bit more.
Involved.
Obscure as that, like.
Yeah.
What address do you put for the gazebo in St. Kip Park?
Lebanon has historic trails that have been designated.
There's that too, yeah.
Cool.
Um. The council shall make a written record approving, approving, approving with conditions, disapproving, or postponing final action on the request. D, decision criteria, the council shall consider the following criteria in determining whether to approve a proposed, whether to prove a proposed landmark or zone. One, association with the life or activities of a person, group, organization, or institution that has made a significant contribution to the city, county, and state or nation. Two, association with an event that has made a significant contribution to the city, county, state, or nation. Three, association with broad patterns of political, economic, or industrial history in the city, county, state, or nation. Four, significance as an example of a particularly, particular architectural style, building type, and or convention. Five, significance due to the quality of composition detailing and or craftsmanship. Six, significance as an example of a particular material and or method of construction. Seven, significance because the resource retains its original design features, materials, and or character. Eight, significance as the only remaining or one of the few remaining resources of a particular style, building type, design, material, or method of construction. Nine, significance as a visual landmark. Ten, significance because existing land use surrounding the resource contribute to the integrity of the historic period represented. Eleven, significance because the resource contributes to the continuity or historic character of the street, neighborhood, and or community. Twelve, significance because the property is fifty years old or older in conjunction with other criteria listed above. Thirteen, the resource is listed on the National Register of Historic Places.
So can I just interrupt? So this list of thirteen items that you just read, that's language from somewhere. Maybe some historical registry template.
So this is probably. There are probably lots of ordinances that are very similar to this that the language is taken from. I don't think, this is not one that I'm aware of that has, that is, you know, required to be adopted in any specific way.
Right.
But it could be that when it comes to, you know, whatever the measures, whatever the process is for having an area determined to be a national historic site. These may conform to that.
Right.
But I don't know for sure, I haven't investigated it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to trust the people who put this together for us, but I'm just curious about.
Yeah, we can, we can ask where it came from.
So would these items possibly be of local significance and not be submitted to the national inventory?
And to. Yeah, because they, they, they specific, they talk about it being a contribution to the city, county, state, or nation, so very well could be very local.
Okay.
I think thirteen is just in reference to if it's already on the National Register, then it automatically gets on yours or ours here.
Yeah. E, removal of designation, the process for removing a landmark or historic zone designation may be initiated, initiated by the council, the commission, or by any interested person who submits to the city recorder an application for removal of the designation. It should probably be city manager or designee because that's how it got started in the first place. The council may amend or rescind its designation by follow, by following procedures required by this development code for designating a landmark, including the adoption of appropriate findings. Seventeen point three two point zero five zero, demolition and moving. A, city manager approval, no person shall move, demolish, or cause to be demolished a landmark or significant resource in a historic zone unless a permit to do so has first been obtained from the city manager or designee. Application for a permit shall be on a form provided by the city. B, review process, upon receipt of a completed application, the city recorder shall include the demolition requests on the agenda for consideration at the next available commission meeting. The commission shall hold a public hearing pursuant to chapter seventeen point one three zero of this development code within forty-five days after a completed application has been received by the city. Commission shall request comments from any historical commission recognized by the city. C, decision criteria.
No, we don't have a recorder.
Uh, the city manager is the ex officio city recorder.
Okay.
And so I believe that, we'll have to double check on the definitions in the code, but I believe that it, it's, it specifies there in the definition of city reporter. But on the other hand, I, I, I think there's, there's, we can certainly change the way it, it's directed. May, it may just make sense to have all of those references be changed to city manager or designee. And that way, it, it's. It, it gives the city manager the freedom to say, okay, for these types of application, my designee is so and so and works. Decision criteria, C, in determining whether the requested demolition or moving is appropriate, the commission shall consider the following. One, plans, drawings, and photographs submitted by the applicant. Two, information presented at the public hearing concerning the proposal. Three, the purpose of this development code is set forth in section seventeen point three two point zero one zero. Maybe that should be the purpose of this chapter. Or section, because that's specifically talking about just this chapter. Uh, four, the criteria used in the original designation of the resource. Five, if within an historic zone, the, the resource's contribution to the zone and the subsequent integrity of the zone, if the resource is demolished or moved. Six, whether denial of the request will involve substantial hardship to the applicant. Six, whether denial of the request will involve substantial hardship to the applicant. Seven, whether issuance of the permit would act to the substantial detriment of the public welfare and be contrary to the purpose and scope of this development code. Eight, the economic, social, and environmental and energy consequences of demolishing or moving the resource compared to preserving it. Nine, the physical condition of the resource. Ten, comments from the historical commission. D, planning commission approval. The commission may approve the demolition or moving request after considering the criteria in this section. If no appeal is filed, the city manager or designee shall issue the permit in compliance with all other codes and per, and ordinances of the city. Planning commission denial. The commission may disapprove the demolition or removal request if, after considering the criteria in this section, it determines that in the interest of preserving historical or architectural values, the resource should not be demolished or moved. F, planning commission postponement. The commission may postpone taking final action on a request for issuance of a demolition or moving permit for a period fixed by the commission as follows. One, no more than sixty days following the date of public hearing. Further postponement, postponements may be made for a period not to exceed a total of a hundred and twenty days from the date of hearing, if the commission makes the finding specified in item two of this subsection. Two, further postponements as stated above may only be made if the commission finds, A, there is a program of product, uh, a project underway that could result in public, uh, in public or private acquisition of the landmark or resource. Probably that's program or project. Underway. And B, there is a reasonable ground for believing the program or project may be successful. Three, after granting a further postponement, the commission may order the recorder to issue the permit if it finds, A, all programs or projects to save the resource have been unsuccessful. B, the application for demolition or moving has not been withdrawn, and C, the application otherwise complies with city codes and state law. G, appeals. A decision by the commission to approve, disapprove, or postpone issuance of a demolition or moving permit, or to grant a further postponement may be appealed to the council by any aggrieved party who appeared orally or in writing, in person, or through an attorney at the commission hearing, and presented or submitted testimony related to the request under consideration. H, final decision. If no decision on the application is made by the commission within the period specified above, the city manager or designee shall issue the permit. I, alternative actions. At the time of demolition or moving application is made, the city manager or designee shall review alternatives to demolition or moving with the owner of the resource, including local, state, and federal preservation programs. J, additional requirements. During a period of postponement, the commission may require the property owner to, one, list the resource for sale with a real estate agent for a period of not less than ninety days. The real estate agent shall advertise the resource in local and state newspapers of general circulation in the area for a minimum of ten days over a five week period. Two, give public notice by posting the hearing notice onsite in addition to a for sale sign which shall read, historic building to be moved or demolished for sale. Lettering on the sign shall be at least one foot in height. The sign shall be provided by the city and posted in a prominent and conspicuous place within ten feet of a public street, abutting the premises on which the resource is located. The applicant is responsible for assuring that the sign is posted for a continuous ninety day period in conjunction with number one above. Three, prepare and make available, uh, any information related to the history and sale of the property to all individuals, organizations, and agencies who inquire. Probably should be make available. Four, assure that the owner has not rejected the highest bona fide offer for sale and removal of the resource. K, press notification. Prior to the issuance of a demolition permit, the director shall issue a press release to local state and state newspapers of general circulation in the county. Press release shall include but not include but not limited, shall include but not probably be limited to a description of the significance of the resource, the reasons for the proposed demolition or removal, and possible options for re, preserving the resource. L, permit conditions. As a condition for approval of a demolition permit, the commission may, one, require photographic documentation, preparation of architectural drawings, and other graphic data or history as it seems necessary to preserve an accurate record of the resource. The historical documentation material shall be the property of the county or other party determined appropriate or other party determined appropriate by the commission. Two, require that specific artifacts, materials, or equipment be protected and saved. The owner may keep all such materials. The applicant shall be provided with a list of persons capable of salvaging the resource. M, dangerous building. This development code shall not be construed to make it unlawful for any person without prior approval of the commission to comply with an order by the city council to remove or demolish any landmark determined by the council to be dangerous to life, health, or property. Seventeen point three, two point zero, six, zero, exterior alteration and new construction. A, scope. No person shall alter a landmark or any significant resource in a historic zone, nor shall any new building or structure be constructed in an historic zone or on a landmark site unless approval is first obtained under this section. In addition, no major public improvement shall be made on a landmark site or in an historic zone unless approved by the commission. B, application process. Application for alteration of a landmark or new construction is in, in, in an historic zone or on a landmark site shall be made to the city manager or designee. The application shall be on a form provided by the city. C, approval requirements. The city manager or designee shall approve the alteration request if, one, there is no change in the appearance or material of the resource as it exists, or, two, the proposed alteration duplicates or restores the affected, affected exterior features and materials as determined from historic photographs, original building plans, or other evidence of original features of, or materials. D, planning commission action. If a request for alteration does not meet the provisions of subsection C of this section, the city manager or designee shall forward the application to the commission. The commission, after notice and public hearing held in accord, accordance with provisions in chapter seventeen point one, three, zero of this development code, shall approve or disapprove issuance uh, of the requested permit. The commission may attach conditions to, to the approval which must be adhered, adhered to for the approval to remain valid. Think that. Now that reference, there is no point one, three, zero. Figure out what that's about. E, decision criteria. Or maybe there is a seventeen one, one, three, zero, but it's in a different chapter, I guess.
There is, it's called public hearing dash planning commission.
Okay, well, never mind then. I got confused. E, decision criteria. The commission shall consider the following criteria in determining whether to approve an alteration request. One, the purpose of this development code. Two, the use of the resource, the reasonableness of the proposed alteration, and the relationship of these factors to the public interest in the preservation of the resource. Three, the value and significance of the resource. Four, the physical condition of the resource. Five, the effect of requested changes related to the original exterior design, arrangement, proportion, detail, scale, color, texture, and or materials. Six, pertinent es, uh, aesthetic factors as identified by the commission. Seven, economic, social, environmental, and energy consequences of the proposed alteration. Eight, any design guidelines adopted by the commission. F, repair and maintenance provisions. Nothing in this development code shall be construed to prevent the ordinary maintenance or repair of any exterior architectural feature which does not involve a change in design, material, or appearance of such feature or which the city manager or designee shall determine is required for the public safety due to an unsafe or danger, dangerous condition. Seventeen point three, two point zero, seven, zero, notice and public hearing. The hearing shall be conducted as a type three hearing and subject to the notice procedural and appeal provisions for such action.
Good job, Blair.
Any questions on that?
Define a type three hearing.
So that, we haven't gotten to that yet. But essentially, it takes all of the different planning actions. Uh, this draft in the later chapters, it takes all the different types of, of planning actions and puts them into different types that all have similar requirements. So like a type one action is an administrative action that city staff can handle by themselves. Type two is goes up a little bit. I think type three are the, are planning commission actions. And type four are the, um, essentially when you add the city council elements. In, in general, that's kind of the way it works.
Is there some place that those are defined in writing?
Yeah, so article, article four. Seventeen point one, two, two is type one applications. For the, the second tab, twenty one.
We'll get to those later.
And we'll get to those in.
We will.
In due time.
In November.
That brings us to the end of article two. Next is article three, general provision. So that's, uh, that means all of the different zones we've, we've covered, and now we're getting into, uh, street development standards. Makes the reading even more fun. So you're next.
Seventeen point four, zero, general provision. Seventeen point four, zero, zero, one, zero, purpose. Purpose of this article is to, A, carry out the comprehensive plan with respect to development standards and policies. B, promote and maintain healthy environments and minimize, minimize development impacts upon surrounding properties and neighborhoods. Seventeen point four, zero, point, zero, two, zero, application of standards. A, application. The standards set forth in this article shall apply to partitions, subdivisions, developments, commercial and industrial projects, single family dwellings, duplexes, and mobile family dwell. B, alter, alternates to standards. The application of these standards to a particular development shall be modified as follows. One, development standards which are unique to a particular use or special use shall be set forth within the district or in this chapter. Two, those development standards which are unique to a particular district shall be set forth in the chapter governed within a district. Seventeen point four, zero, point, zero, three, zero, application of public facility standards. Standards for the provision and utilization of public facilities or services available from the city or suite home shall apply to all land developments in accordance with the following table of records. No development permit shall be approved unless the following improvements are provided prior to the occupancy or operation. Or unless future provision is assured through a bond, deposit, agreement, or similar instrument approved by the city.
What is a district? Is it the zone? Are they referring to this? That. That particular.
So. Wonder if that, would that be the fire district?
I don't know.
Which? I mean, I guess if we, if we created a, uh, a, a historic district, that may apply, it might go back to that. But we can look into what districts we possibly could have.
Okay.
I mean, we don't have any now, but that doesn't mean we won't create any.
Public facilities improvements requirement table. Table seventeen point four, zero, point, one. I think what I'll do is I'll just go across.
What's that?
Almost read everything.
Oh, yeah.
And you said to D, column one, fire hydrant, column two, street improvement, column three, water hookup, column, column four, sewer hookup, column five. Storm during, column thick, streetlights. Column seven, and bike and pedestrian, and column eight. So single family home duplex. Fire hydrant, no, unless required by fire code. Street improvement, C two. Water hookup, yes. Sewer hookup, yes. Storm during, yes. Streetlights, nothing there. Bike and pedestrian, C two. Everything else has, and there's.
So there's, we'd say there's none required, my guess, but we should, we should have something in there. It should be a no.
No.
Yeah.
Multi-family dwelling, fire hydrant, yes. Street improvement, yes. Water hookup, yes. Sewer hookup, yes. Storm during, yes. Streetlights, yes. Bike and pedestrians, yes. Water flush comments. New commercial building, fire hydrant, yes. Street improvements, yes. Water hookup, yes. Sewer hookup, yes. Storm during, yes. Streetlights, yes. Bike and pedestrian, yes. Commercial expansion, fire hydrant, C one. Street improvement, C three. Water hookup, yes. Sewer hookup, yes. Storm during, yes. Streetlights, yes. Bike and pedestrian, no.
Seems like it should be a yes to help kind of, you know, make our community a pedestrian friendly area. Yeah, why wouldn't we want the improvements to be included?
New industrial building, fire hydrant, yes. Street improvement, yes. Water hookup, yes. Sewer hookup, yes. Storm during, yes. Streetlights, yes. Bike and pedestrian, yes. Industrial expansion, fire hydrant, C one. Street improvement, nothing in there.
Should that be like, should that be as needed or? Okay.
Water hookup, yes. Sewer hookup, yes. Storm during, yes. Streetlights, yes. Bike and pedestrian, no.
Are we looking at changing those nos to yeses on the bike and pedestrian? Okay.
I think, I think the main reason why there knows is just seen as a, as a burden for the owner or the operation.
But aren't they required to put in sidewalks next to the street anyway?
Unless they're grandfathered in.
So.
Pre-existing.
The, next to the street, they, they're required, i- if it's next to the street, yes, but.
Right.
But suppose it's all internal to the development. Um, then it's whatever they built originally. And if, if they're just doing an, an expansion of that, the question is at what point should they upgrade those?
But isn't this our chance to kind of future proof our area by adding in pedestrian and bike friendly areas?
Sure, but on the other hand, you, you, there's a balance to be struck between, um, having those improvements required for, where, you know, at a time when they're not going to be a burden on the developer. So for some existing commercial areas, it may be that bike and pedestrian, the bike ways and things like that in the middle of their development internally are really expensive for them to put in. You know, for example, if, uh, if Buy Mark does an expand, expansion, right? And, and you suddenly say, well, yeah, you've got to add these bike ways in the middle of your parking lot, and you need to add all this park, bike parking. It may be that the way they're set up, they don't have the space to be able to do that. Or it would be a lot of concrete and paving, and all they're doing is expanding one portion of their building. So the question is, at what point does it make sense to require that extra burden? So that's certainly up for consideration, and if you have strong feeling about it, I think we should change it, but I guess that, that it should be done with a mind for what, how, how much it might in their future expense. Because we don't want to stop somebody from making good improvements.
Right.
And it could be that it might stifle that.
I guess, I guess I'm thinking of it more as an access to the, to the property or the business versus onsite improvements like parking lot stuff. I'm thinking of bike paths to the, to the facility.
Yeah, and that's the, and that's the, if it's, if it's to the facility and it's on a public way, that's a little bit different. Well, and, and also you could say, well, suppose, suppose we have a requirement for bike lanes to be added to, or, or, or multi-use paths we put on next to the road, but that we don't have, we don't have room for it in the existing right of way. And, and we have, if a new commercial development comes in, we tell them, you've got to dedicate this much space to the right of way. But if you have an existing store that doesn't have the ability, and they already have an operation there, and you say, well, if you're going to expand, you got to add this multi-use path. Well, then it means they don't have enough. Well, then it means they don't have enough parking or they don't have the space on the site to do the expansion that they want. That kind of thing is more of a burden. It's easier to get those things done when it's new construction.
Right.
So I understand what you're saying about burden, and certainly we want to support that, but I'm also thinking about the greater good. And we would like. The businesses who are expanding to think about people biking to work and biking within their facility. Or walking or. You know, because again, we're thinking about the future.
Yeah.
So I wouldn't want. The. Concern about burden to the business to be the reason to not. Think about. The greater good in the future. I mean, I think there's a balance there, so I think it's good to talk about both sides. And, you know, whatever we decide, we decide, but.
I would say that if you do, if you do decide to change that to require them, that there needs to be some sort of threshold added.
Yeah.
How much expansion merits.
Okay.
Adding that.
Yeah, okay.
On the one hand, if it's if it's coffee hut.
Yeah.
Adding five feet onto their shack. That's a little bit different than.
Yeah.
Than Safeway doubling its size.
So there's a graduated. A requirement depending on, I think that sounds reasonable.
Yeah, or a provision even for for the applicant to apply for a waiver.
Yeah.
And then at that time, it can be evaluated whether or not it's, you know, financially irresponsible for them to have to do that.
Partition without public utilities, fire hydrants, no. Street improvements, C two, water hookup, no, sewer hookup, no. Storm drain, no, must accommodate drainage on site, streetlights, no, and bike and pedestrian, no. Partition with public utilities, fire hydrant, no, unless required by fire code, street improvement, C two, water hookup, C three. Sewer hookup, C three, storm drain, yes, streetlights, no, and bike and pedestrian, C two.
So does that mean yes with the C two in the C two?
So this is.
Or.
C not, it's not, this is, all right, it we'll get to C one and C two and C three and C four, those are not zones.
Okay.
Those are conditional and then note one, note two, note three, note four. So we'll we'll get to what down below is is where they are, but it's not, it's not the C two zone or the C.
Got it, okay.
Subdivisions, planned development, and manufactured home park, fire hydrant, yes, street improvement, yes, water hookup, yes, sewer hookup, yes, storm drain, yes. Streetlights, yes, bike and pedestrian, yes. Legend, no equals not required, yes equals required, C equals conditional, as noted. C one, fire hydrants for commercial or industrial expansions, one or more fire hydrants are required when the total floor area of a newer expanded building exceeds twenty-five thousand square feet. Like a hundred square feet. Or the proposed use is specified as hazardous, H in the Uniform Building Code or Uniform Fire Code. C two, street improvements for single family dwellings and partitions, one, new family dwelling. New single family dwellings on an existing parcel less than two point zero acres in size and fronting an existing street which does have a full street improvement, including sidewalks, as required in the city's street design standards in a section seventeen point four two point zero four zero. Shall dedicate the needed right of way and shall install the full improvement along a parcel's furniture. Two, if there is no adjacent improvement, a street furniture fee in accordance with the city's adopted connection fees will be required in new construction improvements. Number three, if a street extension to serve the residence is necessary, the owner must provide the necessary right of way dedication and street improvement to the city's street standards along the full furniture of the parcel. Or a partition to parcels of two point zero acres or lighter does not require street improvements. A parcel, a partition to parcel smaller than two point zero acres requires street improvements. So currently, our standard is anything, so three parcels or less is just considered a regular partition, street standards don't apply. Four or more constitutes a subdivision, and so street improvements are required. This is a little bit different than what our current state states.
So you're.
Where what the current is and what.
Currently, it's based on number of lots ending, not overall size.
Which this would bring it to the size of the parcel, which actually makes a lot more sense in my mind.
Yeah, we we run into what's called serial partitioning. So they'll partition a lot and wait a year and then partition it again and then wait a year and partition it again.
Right.
This would probably alleviate that. In the future, well, maybe, I don't know, but.
As long as we stick to it, yeah, it would really help a lot, because frankly, the the concern of mine is that. You carve these parcels up. And they're, they get small enough to the point that they're not subdivisible enough. Again, you can't cut them down any smaller. And there's no motivation or no money to actually get those improvements put in because there's no sale associated with it, it's just turning over to the next homeowner. Who never wants to actually make the improvement. So this would actually help things out a lot. It would make a lot of people scream. Because we have a number of builders who have been able to do that. One house at a time each year, and then you eventually have a whole neighborhood that's on a a street that's not built for it.
A gravel road.
C three, partitions, wells are only allowed per municipal code provisions. C four, street improvements for commercial and industrial expansions, city will require improvements to full city standards when the use meets either the following criteria. One, the use generates an average of one hundred plus trips per day for a thousand gross square feet of building as documented in the. Trip generation manual of the Institute of Transportation Engineers or other qualified source. Or two, the use includes daily shipping and deliveries trips by vehicles over twenty thousand pounds gross vehicle weight.
I don't see a C four over here.
Yeah, it doesn't. I mean, it's just a note number, but it's not.
Maybe that's our our missing industrial expansion.
Oh.
Street improvements for industrial expansion, that might be a C four.
Yeah, probably.
My turn already? Seventeen point four two, street standards. Seventeen point four two point zero one zero, purpose. A, to provide for safe, efficient, convenient, multimodal movement in the city of Sweet Home. B, to provide adequate access to all proposed developments in the city of Sweet Home. C, to provide adequate area in all public rights of way or sidewalk. Sidewalks, bikeways, sanitary sewers, storm sewers, water lines, natural gas lines, power lines, and other utilities commonly and appropriately placed in such rights of rights of way, not rights or way. D, for purposes of this chapter, one, adequate access means direct routes of travel between destinations. Such destinations may include residential neighborhoods, parks, schools, shopping areas, and employment centers. Two, adequate area means space sufficient to provide all required public services to stand to standards defined in this development code or the city's. Most current engineering standards.
Is that just supposed to be an apostrophe S?
Yep, that's a typo. Seventeen point four two point zero two zero, scope. The provisions of this chapter shall be applicable to. A, the creation, dedication, or construction of all new public or private streets, bikeways, or accessways in all subdivision. Subdivisions, partitions, or other developments in the city of Sweet Home. B, the extension or widening of existing public or private streets, right, street rights of way easements or street improvements, including those which may be proposed by an individual or the city. Or which may be required by the city in association with other development approvals. C, the construction or modification of any utility sidewalks or bikeways in public rights of way or street easements. Seventeen point four two point zero three zero, general provisions. The following provisions. Shall apply. To the dedication, construction, improvement, or other development of all public streets in the city of Sweet Home. Unless otherwise modified through provisions in this chapter, all streets shall be designed in in conformance with the specific requirements of the city's transportation system plan. And most current engineering standards. A, street layout. Location, width, and greatest streets shall be considered in their relation to existing and planned streets, to topographical conditions, to public convenience and safety, and to the proposed use of the land to be served by the streets. B, continuation. Development proposals shall provide for the continuation of all streets, bikeways, and accessways within the development and to existing streets, bikeways, and accessways outside the development. C, future street extensions. When it appears possible to continue a street, bicycle path, and or pedestrian accessway into a future subdivision, adjacent acreage or area tractors such as schools and shopping centers. These facilities shall be plotted to a boundary of the subject, to a boundary of the subdivision or development. Further, the street may be plotted without a turnaround unless the public works department or local fire district finds a turnaround is necessary for reasons of for reasons of traffic safety.
So this section right here, the fire district actually has this section, and they are actually.
Yeah.
Down to the section. So if they give you the notes, what I will do is I will scan it and I'll find them here, so if they, we just had some. Recent subdivisions were, and they've been reviewing them all the fire void week. They have to comment on which criteria, and I asked them to go through this. So I just wanted to bring that out, so they're having some additional notes to go with this one. For line two. About that.
Yeah, and I I think we may, we can probably, there's room to change the language here to make it probably more palatable to them. I think my biggest concern is just making sure that we can connect streets eventually. And and so if there's a way to have a temporary fire to turn around in a spot. And that the instead of a full on cul-de-sac. So that it eventually goes through and has, if if we can have the teeth in the code for us to. Make our will known and kind of push for things like that. This subdivision you're coming up against, or the next, the next meeting. Live Oak Street has two different ends and they don't meet in the middle. And because of the layout of the properties, it was just a pain in the butt trying to convince property owners to. To do what was necessary, you had people buying these parcels because of the way they were shaped. And the different ownership of the two different parts, it was not very, it was not. Feasible for a single owner to extend a street. Because they weren't able to put enough lots on it because they were figured the wrong way. And it didn't, it was just such a pain working with people, the various people who had bought these properties, because one guy wanted to just. Build a house right in the middle of this lot where eventually the street would go through. And trying to find the legal authority to say no was a pain in the butt. And and it was really frustrating, having language like this in the code really helps to say. No, you can't do that, if you want something like that, you're going to have to look outside the city.
So this does kind of help future proof areas for street expansion at some point.
Yeah, we want it to make.
I know there's some spots out by the airport that are.
Does our STP give us the authority to do that?
With, that's actually going to be updated soon too. It's, we're supposed to have a grant, oh, that is dragging their feet on it, but. We're, we're looking to update that as well to make sure that that gives us a lot more authority and teeth when it comes to making sure streets make sense. I mean, Sweet Home has enough street problem, we don't need to add more.
But then some of those people, like, one of the properties, about six months ago, I was looking at the streets you're not connected, because there's two parcels right between it. Even if a person bought that property and I know they can't build a house right there in the middle, but they could still stop progress of of street going through by putting the house and owning that property for fifty years, and you're still not going to ever be able to put a street through it.
Right. It's, it's, yeah, it's not easy, and there's, there's all sorts of things that can put a wrench in the works. My hope is that with the value of, that we can make sure that the that the cost of development is lower, is is low enough. That the, you know, return on investment from from building those properties, hopefully, we just make it econo- economically. Makes sense for people to do that instead of of. Now, just giving them away of things, if we make it so that more worth their while to sell the property to somebody who will develop it, that's really the. Hopefully, we can.
Like those two pieces of property that I wanted to buy, developer would have to go through it, because a a rec- regular person like myself, I wouldn't spend. A hundred thousand dollars just to have two roads to go through there, and what what am I going to get off that hundred thousand dollars, nothing.
And actually, those properties you're referring to are probably the ones that I'm talking about. So Live Oak.
Forty-six or whatever it is.
Manzanita.
Yeah.
Um, the the problem was, you had, you had Live Oak going east and west, and you had Manzanita going east and west, and. Manzanita ended. And then Live Oak had the two ends, but the properties were situated such that they were, it was divided in half roughly, and they were both north-south oriented. So that you, you could only, you'd have to extend a street on two different parts. And get only maybe four houses out of it, and it made it really not very feasible. So we, fortunately, we were able to get a deal where we said, why don't you guys do a property line adjustment? And you're both going to have basically the same amount of property, but if you change the configuration, so one of you can develop on Live Oak and the other can do whatever the heck they want up on Manzanita. And fortunately, that's what happened. And so the the one that you're seeing next, at the next meeting, is a subdivision that's going through, and it's going to be eight lots. And then the other property is owned by a single family, and they are putting their home in a position where, in the future, if somebody wanted to punch Manzanita through later, they could. And they've agreed to that, even though they don't want to develop, they've agreed to place their home in a place where it's not going to get away. So it's been a win, but it's been real pain getting it to that point, and the the deal almost fell through like three or four times. I should get a commission on that one, seriously.
Because one of the properties, one of the properties kind of kind of gets filled up because it's like a swamp. It rains, it's a lake.
Oh, over on Airport.
The two properties.
Is there, is swampy there too?
Yeah, one of them is a lake.
Well, and and that'll be improved with the street going through and all the storm doing improvements, it'll be much better. But anyway, we digress.
Uh, where was I? Yeah, D. Dead-end streets. The following shall apply. One, dead-end streets can be allowed only when the extension of street is not possible due to one or more of the following reasons. A, a natural feature such as a wetland, stream, or steep slope makes it impractical for the street to be extended. B, an existing structure or use is located on an adjacent parcel within the alignment of the proposed street. C, an existing deed restriction or covenant or political boundary does not allow the extension of the street. Or D, the the alignment is approved as part of a planned development. Two, reserve strips and street plugs may be required to preserve the objectives of dead-end streets. Does anybody know what reserve strips are? So I don't know what street plugs are, actually, but reserve strips are awesome. I am highly in favor of them ever since I discovered what they are. Essentially, and that's one of the things that's helped on Live Oak, is that at one point, they were required to have a reserve strip, which is basically. A one foot wide strip of land that is at the end of that dead-end street, and it's owned by the city. And so it gives the city some power over access to that street. And so if somebody buys a property and doesn't want to punch the street through, the city can just say, well, you don't have a driveway. You can't get to this street because you'd have to go across our reserve strip. And so it forces the property owner to cooperate with the city for the extension of that street in the future.
Didn't that also come up as part of Duck Hollow Three? There was an extension there somewhere, I'm talking in vague terms here.
I haven't looked into it specifically with that, but I wouldn't be surprised if there's a line that there's reserve strips in action there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, 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 exactly.
And I think in their their latest addition to that subdivision, there there is a stub street at the end of that. That would connect over to a property on that's owned by someone else. And there is development potential for that property a lot, and so I really want to make sure that, I I believe that we have a reserve strip that we're requiring of that. So, yeah.
E, alignment. All streets other than local streets or cul-de-sacs shall be in alignment with existing. All streets other than local streets or cul-de-sacs shall be in alignment with existing streets by continuation of the center lines to the maximum extent feasible. The staggering of street alignments resulting in T-intersections shall be avoided wherever practical. However, when not practical, the staggering of street alignments resulting in T-intersections shall meet with the approval of the city engineer and ensure compliance with accepted traffi- traffic safety standards. F. Intersection Angles. Streets shall be laid out to intersected angles as near-to-right angles as practical, except where topography requires lesser angles. Intersections of less than eighty degrees shall require approval of the city engineer. All tangent calculations and curb radii shall comply with engineering standards. G. Existing Streets. Whenever existing public streets adjacent to or within a tract are, are of adequate width, additional right-of-way shall be provided at the time of subdivision, partitioning, or development. H.
You meant inadequate.
Uh, are of inadequate width. Yes, sorry. H. Half-Streets. Half-streets may be approved where essential to the reasonable development of an area and when the city finds it to be practical uh, to require the dedication of the other half when the adjoining property is developed. Whenever a half-street is adjacent to a tract to be developed, the other half of the street shall be dedicated. Specific improvement requirements are contained in Section seventeen-point-four-two-point-zero-five-zero. Reserve strips and street plugs may be required to preserve the objectives of half-streets. And, uh, just to, as an aside, half-streets are misnamed. They really should be three-quarter streets because they're pretty much three-quarters of a street.
I just pulled up the definition of "street plug" means a strip of land across the end of a dedicated street for the purpose of separating the street from the adjacent property of another street. Another.
Okay, so it's basically the same as a reserve strip, just a different name. Street Plug. I. Cul-de-sacs. Cul-de-sacs are not encouraged and allowed only where there, where no other reasonable alternative exists. Where permitted, a cul-de-sac shall have maximum lengths of eight hundred feet and terminate with a circular turnaround. Cul-de-sacs over four hundred feet in length shall provide accessways to provide connectivity to adjacent streets and uses unless physical constraints preclude a pedestrian bicycle accessway. The Fire Code may establish additional standards.
So, that last subdivision, I actually preferred the cul-de-sacs versus the, um.
The shared driveway?
The shared driveway back there. So, would we, if we're discouraging cul-de-sacs?
Um, well, I, I, we're discouraging them where there's no reasonable alternative, and, and in that situation, it's not like you were gonna have a three, th- this is talking about it in context of streets, not access to houses. So, in, in that situation, a cul-de-sac would be allowed simply because there's no way you're gonna have a street punched through. It's just not feasible. So.
So, this, this, in this, in this section right here, it's discouraging a cul-de-sac on the end of a street that has future possible expansion through.
Of going through.
Yeah. I guess, and a lot of subdivisions, you know, they design them to have the maximum possible number of lots. And most of the time, they, the developers often avoid a cul-de-sac because it, it eats up more land.
Yes.
Um, but there's other places I've lived where there were cul-de-sacs all over the place because they sold better.
Yeah.
People liked living at the end of a cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
But, um, I think it depends on the developer and the situation. I, I, I think this words it probably as good as I can think, because you wanna leave it open if you can, because there's certain circumstances where it definitely works better than anything else. But I wouldn't want a city full of cul-de-sac people. And I live on there.
All right. J. Street Names. Street names and numbers shall conform to regulations contained in the Sweet Home Municipal Code, Chapter twelve-point-two-zero. A. Grades and Curves. Grades shall conform with the city of Sweet Home engineering standards. L. Marginal Access Streets. If a development abuts or contains an existing or proposed arterial street, the city may require marginal access streets, reverse frontage lots with suitable depth, screen planting contained in non-access contained in a non-access reservation along the rear or side property line or such other treatment as may be necessary for adequate protection of residential properties and to afford separation of through and local traffic. Okay. So, essentially, it's similar to, you know, Duck Hollow, for instance, that has a bunch of houses that back up to Long Street. Um, usually, we don't want those through lots. And so, but they're allowed in that situation because Long is an arterial. We don't want all those houses to have driveways off of Long. We'd rather have them access elsewhere. And so, we want to make sure that they're not actually gonna have, gonna try and access Long Street through their backyard. And, uh, we'll try to do what we can to keep that from happening. M. Lots Abutting a Partial Street. Development of property abutting or an existing public street which does not meet the minimum right-of-way standards shall include sufficient yard setback equal to the minimum yard requirements of the zoning district plus the additional land required to meet the minimum right-of-way width. N. Unimproved Street. Development of property adjacent to an unimproved right-of-way shall require the installation of an improved surface to meet Fire Code requirements and the submittal of a non-remonstrous, remonstrance agreement to participate in future street improvements.
Sidebar, it's a new favorite word.
Non-remonstrance?
Remon.
It's a good word. Seventeen-point-four-two-point-zero-four-zero Streets. The location, width, and grade of streets shall be considered in their relation to existing and planned streets, topographical and drainage conditions, public convenience and safety, the proposed use of land to be served by the streets, and full land utilization which will not result in tracts of vacant inaccessible land. Street design standards are intended to provide city staff with standards and guidelines for protecting the function and integrity of the city's transportation system. There are two types of improved streets, uh, there are two types of improved type standards for city streets. Improved streets are urban standard roadways that provide paved travel lanes, curb and gutter, or infiltration basin drainage, pedestrian sidewalks, bike lanes, and landscape planter areas. Improved streets are also rural standard roadways that provide paved travel lanes, roadside ditch or infiltration drainage, infiltration basin drainage, pedestrian sidewalks, shared road and bike lanes, and sometimes beautification planter area. Unimproved streets are rural standard, standard roadways that provide paved travel lanes, roadside ditch drainage, however, no pedestrian sidewalks, sidewalks, or bike lanes, and no landscape planter areas. The following table implements the standards of the transportation system plan. We have standards, major arterial, minor arterial, collector, local street, residential neighborhood street. Right-of-way width. Major arterial eighty-foot maximum. Minor arterial seventy-foot maximum. Collector sixty-foot maximum, local street fifty-foot maximum. Uh, residential neighborhood street twenty-foot minimum. Curb-to-curb width. Major arterial sixty-foot maximum. Minor arterial forty-foot maximum. Collector forty-foot maximum. Local street thirty-six max, thirty-six-foot maximum. Residential neighborhood street twenty-foot minimum. Travel lane width. Eleven-foot minimum, ten-point-five-foot minimum, ten-foot minimum, seven-foot minimum. Or, or locals, sorry, I actually, I guess I need to read the other ones. Minor arterial ten-point-five minimum. Collector ten-foot minimum, local street seven-foot minimum. Residential neighborhood street seven-foot minimum. Number of lanes. Major arterial four maximum. Minor arterial three maximum, collector two minimum. Local street two maximum. Residential neighborhood street two minimum. Median center turn, turn width maximum. Major arterial twelve-foot, minor arterial eleven-point-five-foot. Collector not required, local street not required, residential neighborhood street not required. Bike lane width minimum. Major arterial two at six feet, six-foot wide. Uh, minor arterial two, uh, two at six-foot wide, collector one at six-foot wide, local street seven-foot wide, residential neighborhood street not required. Parking width maximum. Major arterial eight feet. Minor arterial eight feet. Collector eight feet, local street seven feet, residential neighborhood street not required. Parking width maximum. Major arterial, I just read that. Curb, uh, major arterial six-inch, minor arterial six-inch. Collector six inches, local street six inches, res- residential neighborhood street not required. Planting strip width minimum. Major arterial seven-foot. Minor arterial seven-foot, collector seven-foot, local street three-foot, residential neighborhood street three-foot. Sidewalk width minimum. Major arterial eight-foot. Minor arterial seven-foot. Collector six-foot, local street five-foot, residential neighborhood street not required.
Is there? Is there a reason that it's not required in the residential neighborhood even though?
So, this.
Required?
Yeah, the, if we go to the three asterisks, um, I believe this, and this is out of our transportation system plan, the, it's you know, the, it's only allowed within a planned development. So, in our, in our transportation system plan, the local street is the smallest for most subdivisions. If you do a planned development, then you can have, you can get rid of the, those other things.
Okay.
That was for, for, like, it was kind of put in, I, I think the, the thing that they were thinking of is some of the developments that the Saniam River development had in mind, where you had, um, you had relatively narrow streets with no parking on them and, uh, a lot of, a lot of green space between homes, um, uh, to, to have kind of that park-like feel. Um, or forest feel, you know, so you have a, a, a smaller street that's kind of winding through the trees, and there's not room for anything else.
So, so basically, local street is our normal city street, and the avenue is the standard street.
Right. The, the res- those, those residential neighborhood street standards would only come into play with a planned development, which is something that would go through an arduous process to get approved and would, would have planning commission input and, and approval of whether they happen or not. And so, when somebody comes in for that, they have to have kind of a reason of what they're trying to accomplish, and it's all supposed to fit together.
So, so the, the small planned development that we did, basically, that sits behind the Chinese food, everything, with access off of.
They could do something like this, but, but a lot of times, they should, the developer should be mitigating it somehow. Like, if you had a neighborhood with these tiny streets, it would either, they'd have common areas where there's visitor parking or there are bike and pedestrian paths winding their way through the development that are separate from the cars, and that makes it so you don't need the sidewalks on the streets. Um, things like that, that they're, that they're doing to make it an enjoyable place to be. But they just want the flexibility of not having to have it right on the street.
Okay.
And so, the good thing is that you can review that, and they can, you're, we, we have flexibility to allow that. But you also have a review process where you can say, okay, developer, tell me why you should be able to get that. And how are you gonna compensate for the fact that there aren't any curves or aren't any sidewalks? And no parking. All right. Um, system spacing, I think I was on, right?
Yeah.
Major arterial one mile, minor arterial half-mile, collector half-mile, local street two-hundred-and-fifty feet, residential neighborhood street one-hundred feet.
What do we mean by system spacing?
I believe that's, um, hmm. I'll have to go back to our transportation system plan and see what it means by that. Um, I believe that's the amount of space between arterials. You, you don't expect to have a major arterial within a mile of another major arterial. Uh, and then, for that matter, a local street, you know, it, it's kind of like you're, you're.
The block.
It's not really like blocks, it's more between types of streets, so uh, at least it's, with local streets, it's like blocks. We're basically saying two-hundred-and-fifty feet is about the right, the right distance. Um, but with the other streets that are larger, they're, you know, if you have a collector or a minor arterial, you're expecting a local street to be fairly close to those as well, you know, within two-hundred-and-fifty feet. But you're not gonna have another collector for another half-mile.
Okay.
Uh, design speed maximum. Major arterial forty miles per hour. Minor arterial thirty-five miles per hour. Collector twenty-five miles per hour, local street twenty-five miles per hour, residential neighborhood street twenty miles per hour. Access management, intersection spacing minimum. Major arterial three hundred feet. Minor arterial one hundred feet. Collector one hundred feet. Local street seventy-five feet. Residential neighborhood street fifty feet. Access management, driveway spacing. Major arterial, no direct driveway access. Minor arterial, shared driveway access. Collector, shared driveway access. Local street, direct access allowed. Residential neighborhood street, direct access allowed. So, other city-approved alternatives may be proposed, such as green street standards as defined by Portland Metro Green Streets Handbook and subsequent up- updates. A green street can be a, can be defined as a street designed to integrate a system of stormwater management within its right-of-way and to reduce the amount of water that is piped directly to streams and rivers, be a visible component of a system of green infrastructure that is incorporated into, into the aesthetics of the community, make the best use of the street tree canopy for stormwater interception as well as temperature mitigation and air quality improvement. Ensure that street, ensure the street has the least impact on its surroundings, particularly, particularly at locations where it crosses a stream or other sensitive area. Um, the two asterisks, Matt was talking about planting strips may include filtration strips and swales. Uh, the three asterisk goes back to the residential neighborhood street, allowed only within a planned development. Four asterisks goes back to the access management intersection spacing measured as adjacent edge-to-edge of right-of-way with the higher street category controlling. Seventeen-point-four-two-point-zero-five-zero Half-Street Development and Improvement. Half-street development conditions typically occur in areas where existing travel lanes are pre-existing and development occurs on one side of the right-of-way only. A. Extension of Roadways. In areas where street improvement, where street pavement, curb, stormwater drainage, and sidewalks do not exist, sidewalk curb drainage system and driveway construction shall be required in the following conditions. Probably a colon there instead of period. One, when located adjacent to existing street improvements of sidewalk curb drainage system and street paving. Two, when as a property lot, when as a property lot of an existing subdivision, lot frontages were not constructed within or around the perimeter of the subdivision. Three, when located, when located on a corner of two public street rights-of-ways. Right-of, should be rights-of-ways, I think, not right-of-way, rights-of, rights-of-way, not right-of-ways, both of which do not have existing sidewalk curb and drainage. Corner development will set line and grade for the remainder of the street block segment. Four, when located on a corner of two public street right, rights-of-way with only one, with only with only one, when, and probably when only one of which has sidewalk curb and drainage, the undeveloped adjacent side shall be constructed to match line and grade of the abutting roadway. The abutting road right-of-way providing linkages in the sidewalk network. Probably ought to review that whole paragraph to make sure it works. Five, when located opposite, uh, when located opposite across, that doesn't make sense. One of those needs to go. Um, the public right-of-way from an existing system of sidewalk curb and drainage, development of street structure shall match both vertical and horizontal alignment. When commercial, six, when commercial development projects are constructed or when existing commercial projects are redeveloped, reconstructed or modified, um, and could provide access to the roadway frontage for vehicles and pedestrians regardless of adjacent roadway conditions. Uh, I'm confused. That not providing access to the right-of-way frontage will not remove, um, the requirement for development of pedestrian access along that frontage. Um, I think that needs to be removed, and in a comma. Uh, and pedestrians regardless of adjacent roadway conditions, not providing access to the right-of-way frontage will not remove the requirement for development of pedestrian access along that frontage.
At the long.
Yeah.
I don't know, I think you can have a period after the mission.
Well. I'm gonna have to get with Walt. I'm gonna have to get with Walt on that one, because I'm. Yeah, there's some issues with that. Okay. One of those app, things needs to be fixed. B, layout standards. Half-street improvements shall follow the existing grade and curvature alignment of the roadway and right-of-way. Half-street improvements have three different scenarios. One, half-street improvements in the truest condition shall extend to the center line of the roadway. In cases where the roadway is not centered in the right-of-way, the improvement will terminate as close as practical to the center of the roadway. Public Works Director shall review the project for consideration of alternative options. Two, the equivalent of a quarter-street improvement is where the roadway is in good condition at the right slope and elevation and nothing needs to be changed or updated. Then the roadway may be saw-cut along the edge of pavement or fog line. The new construction improvement shall meet flush with the existing roadway surface and be sealed with a tack coat and a sand seal on the joint. Three, the equivalent of, of a three-quarter-street improvement is where the roadway is in bad enough shape in any form that the improvement shall extend across the center line to cover the, the opposite lane area. This applies also when development happens in category one and two roadways, grass and gravel respectively, that undergo improvements for access without the benefit of subdivision requirements. Where the existing roadway is at adequate elevation relative to the adjoining property, the half-street improvement may meet the edge of existing pavement or roadway structure. If pavement degradation or excavations are significant to the roadway frontage, the developer may be required to complete, to complete finished paving to the center line of the street. Five, when one end of the roadway section is at a lower elevation and remainder is higher than the abutting property, the half-street improvement will require the excavation of the full width of the travel lanes and the lowering of the roadway surface. Six, when both ends of the roadway section are at the high, higher incorrect elevation, the roadway does not need to be, uh, the roadway does not need to be constructed. In this case, street improvements will have to be accomplished in a comprehensive neighborhood, street improvement projects, taking into account driveway, apron slopes, stormwater drainage and property area drainage inlet, uh, et cetera. Seventeen point four two point zero six zero, modification of right-of-way and improvement width. The city may allow modification to the public street standards of seventeen point four two point zero four zero when both of the following criteria are satisfied. A, the modification is necessary to provide design flexibility in instances where, one, unusual topographic conditions require reduced width or grade separation of improved surfaces or two, parcel shape or configuration precludes accessing, accessing a proposed development with a street which meets the full standards of this chapter or three, a modification is necessary to preserve trees or other natural features determined by the city to be significant to the aesthetic character of the area. B, modification of the standards of section seventeen point four two point zero four zero shall only be approved if the city finds that the specific design proposed provides adequate vehicular access based on anticipated traffic volumes. Seventeen point four two point zero seven zero, construction of, construction specifications. Construction specifications for all public streets shall comply with the criteria of the most recently adopted public, public works slash street standards of the city of Sweet Home. Which we do not have any adopted and that needs to change. Seventeen point four two point zero eight zero sidewalks. Public sidewalk improvements are required for all property development in the cities, in the city of Sweet Home or just the city. And along arterial and collector streets. Sidewalks may be deferred by the city where future road or utility improvements will occur and on property in the rural fringe of the city where urban construction standards have not yet occurred. Property owner is obligated to provide the sidewalk when requested by the city or is obligated to pay their fair share if sidewalks are installed by the city at a later date. A, sidewalks shall be constructed within the street right-of-way. Sidewalk easements shall only be accepted where the Public Works Department determines that full right-of-way acquisition is impractical. B, sidewalks shall connect to and align with existing sidewalks. Sidewalks may transition to another alignment as part of the approval process. C, sidewalks width and location, including placement of any landscape strip, shall comply with City of Sweet Home engineering standards. D, planter street, planter strips in the remaining right-of-way shall be landscaped and maintained as part of the front yard of abutting properties. Maintenance of sidewalks and planter shall be the continuing obligation of the abutting property owner. E, mid-block sidewalks. The city may require mid-block sidewalks for long blocks or to provide access to schools, parks, shopping, parks, schools, parks, comma, shopping centers, public transportation stops or other community services. I wonder if that should say mid-block crosswalks.
Yeah, it's a sidewalk.
Cause that would make more sense to me. F, internal pedestrian circulation and accessways shall be provided within all commercial multifamily and planned developments. Seventeen point four two point zero nine zero bikeways. Bikeways are required along arterial and collector streets. Bikeways shall comply with, with city engineering standards. Developments adjoining existing or proposed bikeways shall include provisions for connection and extension of such bikeways through dedication of easements or rights of way. Seventeen point four two point one zero zero, private streets. Private streets shall only be permitted as part of an approved planned development. At a minimum, the streets shall conform to the residential, residential neighborhood, street requirements unless otherwise modified by the decision. Seventeen point four two point one one zero, private access easement, joint-use driveway. A private access easement, joint-use driveway created as the result of an approved land division shall conform to the following. A width, where permitted, the access easement shall comply with the following standards. One, minimum easement width, twenty feet. Two, minimum paved width for private access of a hundred foot, fifty feet, foot, feet of, or less. Or less, and serving one dwelling, twelve feet. Serving two dwellings, sixteen feet. For a private access of, of more than one hundred fifty feet, sixteen feet. Three, maximum length, two hundred feet. Four, no more than four dwelling units shall have their sole access to the easement. Easements serving more than two homes shall comply with provisions for a residential neighborhood street. Unless we want to completely change it. So what I think we should do then is, um, staff can look at the, at what's existing on this and see if there's anything material indifference and bring that back to you to compare.
And is the commission fine with the three-foot planter strips? I know some of us weren't thrilled with the three-foot planter strips.
Yeah.
This is going to make it a requirement.
I think it's still currently a requirement, although we just don't have as much flexibility for removal of that.
Yeah, right now, intercepts are required.
Yeah.
Um, and so if we want to entertain removing that, removing that requirement, that's certainly up for discussion. I think it's interesting that they, they exist both in commercial areas and in residential areas. A new commercial area, they would have to put in a wider planter strip.
Yeah, it's huge, seventeen.
Well, it's, and it's considered, mostly to have it be a buffer between the roadway and
Right.
pedestrians, try to promote that. Which I, frankly, it's, it's great, nice, it certainly makes things a lot more comfortable for pedestrians.
If they're maintained.
Right.
Well, and, and beyond that, too. I mean, beyond that, it's, it would only be, you know, feasible in areas that haven't had any physical construction inside the city limits. I mean, it's gonna be, it would be really hard to take something downtown, add a seven-foot strip to it, even in an area. Yeah.
So, we have a planter strip, but what happens if at a later date a residence decides to put that all in concrete and widen the sidewalk out to the curb?
I think that's a permit requirement.
That would not, they couldn't legally do that.
Yeah.
Uh, because there, again, if you have a planter strip requirement in the development code, it, you know, anything. First of all, those, those planter strips are supposed to be in the public right-of-way, so it's not their property anymore.
Right.
Yes, they have to maintain it. But if you're putting an improvement like concrete or something like that in that area, that's, that's required to write it.
So it's been done, whether they had a permit or not, I, I can I know of specific examples. And then another thought that would enter into that is if a car parks parallel at the curb, you know, and somebody gets out on the passenger side, they've got to navigate usually a bunch of weeds.
Depending on what the planter strip was like, sometimes they.
Actually, it would be better to be contracted, and I've kind of taken that position before as we've talked about it. I just toss it out, do we, do we feel strongly about that? Is that planter strip really sacred?
Well, the, I guess from the, in defense of the planter strips, and, and I'm biased because I grew up with them. I, I had a, my neighborhood house, where I grew up, there is a, I believe a four-foot wide planter strip, but was part of the development, I had to mow it all the time. Um, I do like being able to walk down the street and have some separation between myself and my kids and the parked vehicles and the traffic. Um, even if they're not maintained, it is still nice to have that separation. Now, I, I like that we're talking about them as planter strips and not beauty strips because they're often not. But some of them, some people do take care of it. And they, and they are nice, but others don't. And that's, that's more of a code enforcement problem than it is a development code problem, in my opinion. We, we should make sure that people maintain their planter strips. Um, that's part of their responsibility of taking care of their properties to maintain this.
Now, I've often seen planter strips in areas like that where people have gone more zero escaping with a few shrubs and you know, smaller river rock or something in there, that's perfectly acceptable. I mean, it's not concrete, and then again, it
No maintenance.
mitigates the whole mud issue, and I know what Hannah's talking about too, because I've gotten out at people's houses and just stepped right into a swampy, muddy mess and then you gotta go in their house. So, I agree, I agree in, in the idyllic setting, there, they are a great thing. Neighborhood I grew up in had them. Um, I currently don't have one where I'm at right now, which is fine with me, but it's a very old street, so.
But still, I'm being a little bit redundant, but a passenger getting out of a parallel parked car sometimes finds it to their advantage to get out on concrete.
Instead of into grass.
Or the mud, or the weeds, or the plants, or the shrubs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or the pea gravel.
Yeah, right.
I, I think it's gonna, I don't know if there's any kind of language we can add that allows us to have the flexibility or ability to remove it on a case-by-case basis, but then.
Or to give some flexibility as to whether they're required or not.
Yeah.
With the planned development.
With the planned development, it's already there.
Right, but in, in a typical subdivision, something like that.
Yeah.
Like the last one we just did.
I think the, well, what I would see, you know, often.
In lieu of a larger sidewalk, say.
Yeah, or, you could, you could also have provisions for what is allowed in that planter strip.
Yeah.
Specify that they have to be graded and if their landscape, if they're, if they're not zero-scaped, uh, require that they be that the, the adjacent homes irrigation system covers it.
Right.
Um, or, or that they be zero-scaped or something, or, or that they be maintained in such a way that it's not a hazard for the person who's getting out of that. I think with the newer subdivisions, I think you have more flexibility with that.
Yeah.
And you can have a condition to live with like that. But let's face it, the, the problems that we're all talking about, those are in the existing homes.
Right.
And those are the ones that this isn't going to change.
No.
It may prevent something like that from happening again.
I do like the idea.
Put the language in there that's gonna.
Yeah, I do like the idea of the extension of the homes irrigation system into that area. I've seen that a few times and it does help alleviate that being a, an ugly mess because usually those put grass in it. And so it'll, it'll maintain it as green and mo.
We also live in, we also live in an area where home irrigation systems are extremely rare.
And that's, and that's another part too, except in the newer subdivision.
But I think, you know, if you move into a subdivision, like, some people get, want to live in a subdivision. They want it well-kept up, you know, that's the reason why they're buying into the subdivision. Um, I mean, probably, you know, if I lived in a subdivision, I'd want code enforcement to come by to, you know, I wouldn't want to be living in between two neighbors that didn't keep their property and then mine looks good. And, you know, it ruins the property value, or people, if, if you wanted to sell your house, they'd go, oh, I don't want to buy your house because your two neighbors could care less what the property looks like.
Oh, you've driven by my house.
Yes, I am, no, no.
But I think in the newer, I think in the newer subdivision, most of the newer, newer homes, you're gonna have some irrigation systems installed.
Yeah. It's almost standard in, in newer homes to have a basic system installed.
I, I'm not trying to force or promote one thing over the other, but uh, there, there is a home or a couple of homes up on Fifth Avenue where they have put concrete out to the curb. It's one of the nicest looking areas on the street, to be honest with you. Main Street, you get out on concrete. Twenty-second Avenue, you can park parallel, you get out on concrete. And that would be a nuisance to get out in the middle of shrubs, rocks, mud.
On the other hand.
So we're looking at it, excuse me. We're looking at it from two different perspectives. One of them is a pedestrian walking down the sidewalk. The other perspective is a passenger getting out of a car.
And.
Maybe we can come back to this.
Yeah, no, I, I think it's, it's certainly something, i- if you guys, if you would like to have a change, we're certainly open to those proposals. Uh, but e- every perspective is, everybody's got a different perspective on it. Some neighborhoods, they might not want to make it more comfortable for people to park on the street because hopefully it'll cut down on the number of people parking on the street. Um, but it's, yeah, it's, I can see why they look bad to some people, why they don't to others.
Well, then, you know, and some of the people, they think, you know, since it's right-of-way, well, why should I have to, uh, mow that if, if that's city property and it's not my property? The city should come, you know, you get these two different views on people thinking that way.
Fortunately, the law's on our side with that.
Yeah, that's a can of worms on that.
You're not gonna get away from, from that. But yeah, so if you, I, I would suggest if you would like to have a different standard or something, let, uh, let us know what you'd like to see and we can, we can work out a draft to be considered.
Put it on your list to come back to.
Okay.
Look, look up a product called turf stone.
Turf stone.
That'll solve your problem.
What is turf stone?
Concrete lattice, twenty-four by.
Oh, so it has base metal for.
A lot, a lot of car lots use it on their grassy hills. They use it in Albany on the.
I'd love to put some in my, in the driveway that I've.
Yeah, park RVs on it. I had a whole driveway covered in fuzzy time and it was just a concrete lattice.
It's concrete, so I saw.
It's orange, it's thick.
I saw one that was a, uh, it's a, a metal lattice, this honeycomb structure.
Yeah.
That you put down and you, and you actually fill that with.
Gravel and stuff. Yeah, this, this one's similar, except they're big paving stones. And people put RVs on them and use them all over the place.
What do they call the game?
Well, turf stone is one brand.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Let's see, all right, B. Surface improvements. The surface width noted in A1 above shall be improved with either asphalt or concrete for the entire length of the private access easement. C, maintenance. Provision for the maintenance of a private access driveway shall be provided in the form of a maintenance agreement, homeowners association or similar instrument acceptable to the city. The applicable document shall be recorded against the deed record of each parcel and if appropriate, placed on the final partitioning plant, flat. D, turnaround. A turnaround shall be required for any access easement, which is the sole access and which is either in excess of a hundred fifty feet or which. Or which serves more than one dwelling, turnarounds shall comply with the design provisions of the applicable fire district. E, fire lanes, all private access easements shall be designated as fire lanes and signed, and signed for no parking. Seventeen point four two point one two zero, lots and parcels served by private access easements. The following shall apply to all lots and parcels that are accessed by either a private street or private access easement. A, lot and parcel size, the easement containing the part private access easement shall be excluded from the lot or parcel size calculation. B, setbacks, the line fronting along a private street or private access easement shall be considered a property line. Setbacks to the garage and home shall be measured from this easement line. C, lot depth and width, where required by the underlying zone, the lot width shall be measured along the easement boundary. And the lot depth shall be measured from the easement boundary to the rear lot line. Seventeen point four two point one three zero, traffic impact study. The purpose of this subsection is to is to coordinate the review of land use applications. With roadway authorities and to implement section six six zero dash zero one two dash zero zero four five one dot E. Of the state transportation planning rule, which requires the city to adopt a process to apply conditions to development proposals in order to minimize impacts. And protect transportation facilities, the following provisions also establish when a proposal must be reviewed for potential traffic impacts. When a traffic impact analysis must be submitted. With a development application in order to to determine whether conditions are needed to minimize impacts to and protect transportation facilities. The required context of contents of traffic impact analysis and who is required and who is qualified to prepare the analysis. A, when a traffic impact analysis is required, the city or other road authority with jurisdiction may require a traffic, traffic impact analysis, TIA. As part of an application for development, a change in use or a change in access. A TIA shall be required where a change of use or a development involves one or more of the following. One, a change in zoning or a plan amendment designation, two, operational or safety concerns documented in writing by a road authority. Three, an increase in site traffic volume generated by three hundred average daily trips, ADT or more. Four, an increase in peak hour volume of a particular movement to and from a street or highway by twenty percent or more. Five, an increase in the use of adjacent streets by vehicles exiting the twenty thousand pound gross vehicle weights by ten vehicles or more per day. Six, existing or proposed approaches or access connections that do not meet minimum spacing or site distance requirements. Or are located where vehicles entering or leaving the property are restricted or such vehicles are likely to queue or hesitate at an approach or access connection. Creating a safety hazard. Seven, a change in internal traffic patterns that may cause safety concerns or eight, a TIA required by ODOT pursuant to OAR seven three four. Dash zero five one. The traffic impact analysis preparation, a professional engineer registered by the state of Oregon in accordance with the requirements of the road authority shall prepare the traffic impact analysis.
Can we quit?
Thought we were just getting to the good part.
I know, and we're knocking on the door.
Street parking.
Wow.
You'd be excited to come back to the next meeting, but.
Yeah.
Oh, I think we should read three more.
You you take your turn.
There we go. All right, I guess with all that excitement behind us. We'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting for August nineteenth, twenty twenty-one at eight twenty-eight.
Thank you very much for suffering through my droning voice.
So do I get a request at TIA for First Avenue?
Do you have a. A application.
For development?
Or development?
I'll develop my backyard.
Have a good night, commissioners.
Bye, Greggs.
Good night.
Night, everyone.